Good evening. Thank you for taking our information session. My name is John Law. I'm a member of this community, this is already here. I'm a business associate server. My family is a business server for all the communities. This is my home. I've been a part of that there and now I'm starting to look closer at your question. But I'm an immediate server and we ask essentially, well, just the most significant services we all need. Well, this is one of the members of our community who don't have whatever they've got on their and they don't know what you can do. There's a spirit, frustration, confused, and the businesses are like, maybe it should be another members of this community that we need to stop. They all come up to say, like, it was a spirit, frustration, confused, because they never had a doctor, although they knew the rules around my doctors. It feels like they need to go out and the rules are hard. We get the correct way, that's the decision when you visit, and you can pick the order and get all of it. This is all looking for us in two weeks. I'd like to just ask for a really high attitude while I'm here for my years of work. I'm always just making my own office. In other words, you're not helping here, long-term preparedness. We can't help the people who are demanding from leaning their health. The nurses, the animals, the nurses, the sorcerers, the nurses, the doctors. We have a community that will hold things together as best as possible, and we can't do it. Our hard work does not mean we're lost, and there is so many that will happen. So who are we? Well, when they came to say that they're hurting the community of all the years, it always made. We are being a server of the promise and critical shortage of doctors. This issue is not just a touch rate, but a specialist server that gave you the facts all year ago. And it's giving our hospital or just going to give you proposals. You understand that we need action about community and the quality of the community as a server, which is what we can be a part of. So how do we get all of them, how do you get all of them? This is what represents to our community as a community. We are here to be given a report of the service in addition to the office of work, the government, the A D S, medical affairs, all of the positions of services, and we need to be able to be able to take these agencies, carry responsibility with the doctor shortage of our community. And because they're not like community, they make server priority. We also understand that not the group of doctors cannot be a server. And I'm sure we're here for others' needs, but this is about every rule we can be held over, and many of other offices are ahead of us, but our experience and knowledge is to be bigger than our doctors. This is the second time we have ever been ruled over. Again, for some of the facts, regarding the government, there are 11,656 physicians. Only 725 of our doctors are ruled over. That's 7% of all the doctors who are over, are being ruled over. 93% of all the doctors in the office are being ruled over. Now, let's look at the number of doctors that are over. 81% of all the patients who lives in the government areas. 19% have been ruled over. Yet 93% of the physicians are over the circumstances. We may clearly be on our own. So services of all communities, the matter is simple. If all of them are over, if we're not over, we need another 100,000 doctors to serve as rule over, which is 150 more than we currently have. We understand that the challenges is the reaction to this rule over. Server of this community is one of our hardest, it's a sweet little block. We need, we probably go for a massive move over, and then we want to hold on to our recovery, and anyone that we want to see in our community. We remember if we have one of those working on solutions, but that's fair, it's something that's all that they have to process. And then they need to see that, and all of us are around with the A D S, and all of the doctors who live around us as a server. What do we hope with all of our members? The server of these doctors is the one that goes to our community. And I don't want to hang anything up with all of us on it, because this is horrible. When you have a non-community, you just see one side of the server of these doctors. It's horrible that, and then everyone that you meet has one of those signs that you see everywhere in our community. So our roles are to make sure that we recruit and get doctors, we can get everyone, our system, location, as a server, including a local healthcare doctor. We also work as a server of the doctors that are being there, including the nurses, animals, workers, and the community. I'm hoping just today, any of the doctors are beginning, but they need to be able to get there, if we need all of their, all of their workers, for their attention of the doctors. So what is this community doing? The talent of the community of our community to recruit doctors, I'm sure there was someone who did program in that, and they need to lock out here with a lot of the folks that are providing money for recruiting doctors. These are the people that have to step out and help recruit doctors to run out. We're just getting a lot of the doctors from the community who produce a lot of money, how they get the dollars to recruit, and then the nurses who are following their trust. The server of these doctors, community, is their key, the nurses are just giving these difficulties for recruiting doctors. We are not paying the hundreds of doctors, any months in some areas that we can earn, the workforce is the enemy, and this is the order to recruit doctors, it's established with the laws that we're recruiting. Our role is to solve the problems submitted by the town or county, in favor of giving the rules that we can allow their juice for offices to work. We need to use the median, we need to have a position with all the various agencies, and we need a server, all of our ready, that are recruiting. So what are those signs? We've got a lot of the open signs that they do. It's not like that, but show whatever you can give me, my kisses. If you still have your esteem, it's the first that my members are renewing. And I will assure you, please, you won't blame me. Any other great companies that are around, I want to, I want to give them to the server of all those signs that you see. We're prepared to us, and I would be prepared to you too. We need air, our community needs air. We obviously need air. If you sell our story, you can all close the listen. We need all the agencies that are over the doctors, who are responsible, who are involved in bringing doctors to server. Please, listen to us. We need, we need doctors.
Our next speaker is Ms. Keno.
I think I'm coming out of my, this is, this is a reason, why I do here.
We're right, we're pointing directly out.
Okay. I think I can come out, I appreciate that, which is more people than than, uh, you can imagine, so I really appreciate it all. Um, I think it's wrong when you give out a lot of the doctors who's a server there. Um, similar to, to me, uh, it's kind of in this area, from, 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 where it's a 90 block, that's where there's, uh, a weight, and where there's, I don't know, a separate block. And so, you know, the other roots, I don't know, I, the, 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 uh, the, uh, the doctors. Does everyone have a, you know, not have a doctor, hospital, or the underprivileged having the ability of a residency? Um, but when I went to our, actually, we see a lot, you know, not a lot, not doctors. I do, I think it's a moment, it's better right now, over, for, uh, for having a dog is, if we don't, if we don't like, stop this trend, even on about activities, still want to have them together. So, you know, we all kids, grandparents, ourselves, we didn't want, we wanted, we wanted, we all did, to, 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 okay? That's just, yeah, for businesses, you know, whether it's a job, that everybody can move together, if, if, if we need our closure, we need to come across, to be, uh, you know, with closure, just to, to have trouble finding members, if you're really interested, you're going to move together, or businesses together, that's a way, that's just moving back. And our, you know, just a personal, you know, our digits and older, we have a dog, this young dog, I know that since we were, we're grounded, have a grand business together. And, you know, right now, our labor delivery is in, is in, so pretty severe, the other people have, they're getting into some, just, uh, have a center, different holidays, and we could get a lot of that, and maybe delivery on a consistent basis, you know, but younger parents, or something, we can voice for mom instead of dog, instead of living together. So we have this bigger, you know, bigger, um, you can see the complex system, the, the conditions, it's, it's, those people want, or if you don't have the, how they're alive in hospital, and alive in the staff, we, for dogs, we still need younger. So I just, I just want, you know, like, I think everyone has a contract, or what it means to have four people, or a medical agency of some sort, to have to, I would say, for now, I just want to work, we could mind, not get trapped, but that means that people could want to move together, what it means for our kids, grandparents, or ourselves, I think, not about moving together, and, and, uh, just keep that in mind, and still rally behind, how we can get this, and change this trend, we can see together, even the one that's happening, where it is, we can, we can try to reduce and stop it, and, and, and stuff.
Hi there. My name is, can you hear me? My name is, and I'm actually very talented today, so it's maybe over the last, I guess, I didn't intend to speak today. Um, like, I'm going to go with the only, I grew up on a farm, so I can just tell them, and I didn't have a significant degree, and I was a class, and then I, and then I'm I'm a class, and I'm the same with my parents, it's a, a nice place to live, and incidentally for this, I think it's a showbiz stuff. Um, so, I've been giving everything I want to say on behalf of all the physicians that were in this, this same, so, thank you for giving, um, it never, it's just the way what the distributing energy, or they didn't have access to it, and I can see for us, so I'm going to put a paper, as, 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 and Dr. Joplin, he's saying our thanks to all of the physicians in our work, and every of the communities, we really appreciate that.
Good evening. I'd like to start with a greeting to everyone who's coming and the volunteers that organized this. Uh, my name is Justin Stevens, I'm the chairman of the Center for Children's Association, and I'll start off by explaining a little bit about our association. Uh, it is a nonprofit. We are run by the town, the county, as well as our partners at the village of Melva, Big Alley, Roshi, and White Springs. It is a fantastic service. Uh, the last couple of years, EMS service has been all over the news with struggles, and thanks to our staff, we have avoided the worst of them. We have fully functioning advanced care paramedics, where others have to go with the licensed servants. We have consistent staffing of us that we have been able to avoid much of the issues that our urban counterparts did. And I am happy to say that this particular building is one of the most unifying ones we have with our regional partners. So, is that better? This is maybe, I have to say, one of the most unifying communications we have with our regional partners. But it's not one of those struggles, as they have offered in ER soldiers. This is the soul of it. This is only add total order pressure to our merger systems, that are making it our community respond as they should be. They are doing interfacility transfers, as opposed to helping those in our community with their type of need. And this was never his intention, but we have to do what we need to in a emergency. Now, why is this so ridiculous? We need to sign our works contract with the A D S in 2012, and we have announced 26 extensions with the A D S. Our current contract runs out once September 1st. We have been negotiated, but we have been seen delays, and we have some disagreements in this negotiation. One of the primary ones being Lorax. And for those of you who are not aware, Lorax consists of Howard Chang, working for Lorax, and it is on all. This is patently unfair to what Howard Chang, who's a physician, they have zero point of balance, and then the preparedness and alertness is simply not what it should be for a conventional policy. Our advocate service is not only concerning from the doctor, you know, but also under additional stress due to our current situation. And I can't say enough things about both hydrogen versus fusion, as well as our, our staff, because they need to affect the past, you know. And to add to the doctor talking, I would like to say, it is, we don't rely on doctors goes for our immediate needs, if you haven't been purchased. By design, they are the gatekeepers. Without a family doctor, you do not have access to any help. You can't get everywhere with the specials, you can't get diagnostic, you can't get labs over, you can't get for surgeries. So, if you're lacking a family doctor, this has a trigger, you know, without a doctor, who have a very large screen, you do not have access to any of the hell of it that you deserve as a server. So, in closing, I would like to thank the board of managers, and everyone who's here, it is very important.
Last week, there's nine, it's Dr. Coro, he's the assistant registrar for the all of the physicians and surgeons of Alberta.
Okay, I'm going to come like you said, I'm going to do the lectures. Excellent. Um, so, we did, uh, thank you very much to the community for the invitation, thank you for the attendance of both through the town and the county. Uh, we just started, we need school for statement, while these are getting to the thing that you should know who's out there in front of you. First of all, I have to sign in, so my hand is in my pockets, so then I have to start talking with my hands, otherwise then we can't start. I, my name is Dr. Coro, I am a family physician by training. I spent 22 years in the Royal Family practice in the city of Hinton, Alberta. And I made a few thoughts about Royal Family practice. I was a foodie server for a bunch of medical students, and both created a human medicine residents in all of Alberta. And I made a few thoughts about Royal Family medicine. I did an internship for surgery at University of Alberta, and was a surgeon, as well as a family doctor, and performed operas of surgeries, even in the CIA, a few times when nobody else was around, but we will talk about that tonight. I have a few thoughts about Royal Family medicine. I used to get consultations from the medicine, you need to learn the medicine in Hinton, to have a surgery. I have a few thoughts about Royal Family medicine. When I left, it's in 2015, we had a lot of the first family physicians. Except for one, everybody was a Canadian, trade, and graduated from the law there, one of half of them were former students and residents who had trained with us, and they were cut back. I have a few thoughts about Royal Family medicine. And since today, as somebody you may have heard the news, is in the same boat we were. Unfortunately, this reminds lots of company. So, I'd like to do this talk briefly about what the knowledge of physicians and surgeons does, maybe just tell us a minutes, and then talk about a couple of very productive things that may be assistance to our community, and to you as citizens, as you support the retention or recruit of the healthcare providers, including physicians, instead. So, CPSA is a great share of legislation, and we are a number of beginning majors in Alberta, in the light of these six, seven, and eight, that are responsible for overseeing the physicians and physician assistants in practice. You can't practice as a physician in Alberta without having to practice for a license. We have several very basic rules. We oversee the options of physicians and ensure that they are late on orders, so that the physician's practice stays up to date, as A and U H. We need to ask maybe, and to judge complaints and concerns about physicians, and whenever possible, and require to turn it into a working opportunity, and a professional level of opportunity for your physician. We need to contribute to all the policies, I feel, on healthcare funding, and in the prior, I'm the executive responsible for physician registration, for the assessment of decisions for one-time practice in Alberta. And not surprisingly, that's a bit of a hot topic these days. It is really important that you also know what CPSA does not do. We don't tell AHS what to do or where to go. We don't tell for health what to do or where to go, although you're ideal, we sometimes do share goals. We don't tell the visitor where to go or what to do. We don't tell any other medical association where to go or what to do. We don't tell what healthcare professionals want to do, and also many things, we don't tell physicians about the run of offices with their patients, and we don't recruit. And that part is extremely important. The original is a common political interest, examples recruiting and assessing the physician. And we're prevented by legislating from doing the form. So we need to try to, in the last two years, is remove as many of the legislative barriers as we can, while maintaining those safeguards to make sure that the physician comes to your community, to somebody who trusts to the warning, with a three-year-old grandson needs care. Now, the process is, we'll lose it by about four, and when it comes to registration, we are fortunate in Canada, well, let's be honest, under the section, it doesn't necessarily have a volunteer. We are fortunate in Canada to have essentially the central clearance for physicians to start an application, practice, visit, and call us, and then they say, transparent if they refer a physician, whether you are in Saskatchewan, or having to go to Bangladesh. That information is carried by the CPSA, and we can make this decision on, hey, you don't look, you're eligible, within 24 or 48 hours, once, two days, not weeks or months. Once we say that under to the physician, they can start the process up, as some people have said, making sure that they can demonstrate that they're really armed, they say they are, that they really are armed, that they really practice, that they really want to cover this side. That process, one that's completely, was all been in the region, 24 to 78 hours to make a decision, that's one to three days, not weeks, not months, and all the time it's one the land, and if something is missing, everybody here has a good test, we have all tests to do, and that we use to deter people out. Once we come out that registration hour down, then the police lines is, are they a community graduate? He's a guy, he's a doctor's partner, and I'm a volunteer, a little sort of alderman. And then come, to us with, without their community credentials, so they can't prove their identity, when we make it there, they need to be treated, they finish their medicine program, and they fail their exam. Well, when we have the treatment, we need to still get an assessment done in future as a substitute to our practice, and that's where our practice rate is assessment, has a different light. Although every province of the country has a practice rate assessment, or any market, as we call it, it used to say, blah, my wife told me it sounded like blah, and we don't do that anymore. We can have a good process in Alberta, processes, and against the practice board, physicians every year, and the rest of the country, look together. First, our registration was 21, we doubled to 70, we get down, but the next year was going to be 86, we had 105. Last year was 88, we get to 135, this year we'll punch to 200. It's a string harder, most certainly, to have any physicians, that they're going to find a place, with any justice sponsor, mostly in rural Alberta. Going out on the outside, another process is that that's someone can't, is a single person, to get, we consider it very difficult. It's important to know that that's the same part. And the screening process, we do without some planning of registration, we include a couple of reviews, including its interpretation, to give us a sense that that physician has the chops to be your practitioner. More than 95% of those physicians being assessed pass, so we think we're actually screening out people who don't pass. Some still fail, but most don't, and at the end of the day, if you want a physician to come to your community, then those are what we're doing. And now we've tried to accelerate some of that period process in my last year, and then what we did at CPSA, we've been online, we've already learned, physicians have been saying, incident experiments, but what we've done is we've taken four jurisdictions to recommend about the health of family physicians, and I'll tell you who they are, the United Kingdom, Ireland, the United States of America, and then Australia. And then we set their standard medicine tree, looks exactly like what we have And then we set their family medicine tree looks exactly like what we have in Canada. We wanted to give a project to be able to say, okay, we're going to try to reinvent, shorten up the registration line and shorten up the assessment line. The first three months of the PRA is usually parent over shoulder, eyes in the eyes. You're going to scrutinize everything you do, start hopping because we don't know you. The second part is in the head of the practice. So it's really exposure, it's not even assessment. Where are we getting these people into that second part we're getting in? We have almost three hundred physicians who come to all of the concerned oncologists from January two thousand twenty-three to July twenty-second of two thousand twenty-four. The other thing we're trying to do is we're looking at other jurisdictions around the world. Who's got evidence regarding the maybe like ours to see if there's any others we can bring on the board, maybe somewhere in the millions, Singapore, uh, Germany. And see if we can apply the same sort of rule. But I mentioned four jurisdictions in particular. People that potentially starting out to see as little as nine weeks, just over two months, for the time they get started, they've always been over before. And so, generally, to the community. If it's a international medical emergency that was happened to before, there may be never places to expand the channels, so to speak, if I can say that. Now. The other part of creating a physician that can behave as right as all we're done with, that is sponsorship. Since two thousand fifteen, my medical service is the only sponsor who would be playing in an international or having a local HHS certifications. And several of the starting work, mostly grown-up work, including some family medicine. And the intensive AHS are planning out that they do not choose us. This was based upon, and it was a new by CPSA council in two thousand fifteen. And that's because we created this program, it was created for the family doctors in Milwaukee, towards in downtown Edmonton, Calgary. And contributing to a mismatch that we talked about in terms of where our agents are in the physicians part. If AHS has another partners that have filled that role and who now that the executives who are named and heard prior to care organization. Will have to do this work as well. But since March of this year, we have opened a sponsorship to other entities beyond the AHS. Whether it's disability, whether it's providing enterprise, in the digital physician, that can be thought upon as ask, ask it. If individuals, if organizations have interest in doing this, but eventually a lot of us support. The physician is welcome to come to the community, but there's not a Canadian credentials. While they're able to do this work at AHS formally again. AHS will continue to be the need, and I have no ability in certain parts or groups of areas, AHS, the new entity will be, will be a big player. Now, since March, we have over two hundred entities that did medical operations in similar. Applying us to be sponsors, or one of four hundred physicians that are potentially being created. Here are my challenges to you folks into your community. Only, um, sorry, this is embarrassing, I'm broken. Only third December of those applications are coming for Royal Albert. The rest are coming for natural medicine and power. And then thirteen of those physicians are coming to Royal Albert right now. There may be a little better way, along the whole thing that we spoke about, connecting a new physician to a community, we may be a little better way. To link, growing into that community. With the support for a new physician and their family as considering a sponsorship opportunity and written in there. Sponsorship allows you to potentially, allows you to have a physician for at least a minimum of six years. Just what happened to be credentials, it is a credential commitment. Would you encourage me to be taught about something by the community? Considering our current doctors to do an application, that's a challenge. Our medical services have been supporting these sponsored physician for us to ask here. To generate between seventy and a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars per physician. Since two thousand fifteen. This is not cheaper, uh, this, pointing out. The equal position and a lot of happy characters is potentially a lot more expensive. And we need encouraging them to think of another opportunity that this may offer you, as we can do to consider going forward. And will somebody at PRA talk about those sort of jurisdictions, we may, uh, be able to sponsor. And I would agree with that forward and encourage it around. Encouraging your domestic medical students, your residents, and the health providers of your community. It is how we build our community, that's it. It's how we build that.
Who the cultures are we being, my dear, and who we speak to in an emergency, I think I just answered that one. Will the emergency department need to put on the doctor, the nurses? Will that be or the ambulance will that be to, to remain replaced with the appropriate care? Yes.
Sorry, we need to factor, um, my AHS members wanted to leave us all on access to A one one. Which is a perpetual I, and which is an alternate at least initial, uh, to source contact for a local area to follow. And one concern briefing on the local, um, question. Uh, and AHS certainly does a lot of reading of locals for emergency departments. There remains a Royal Welcome Program, is administered by the Alberta Emergency Association. And then it includes two parts, it includes a local program and then a, and we need careful here because I'm on that A through. Uh, a seniors relief program, uh, it's over fifty-five, so it's very not that old. Which is intended to help, uh, taking emergency partnerships for a, if enrolled or physician. Unfortunately, and maybe it's a side of the times, an increasing percentage of those local physicians are going unfilled. As for local programs. But there are actually agencies with a new product who provide that service for the citizens of Alberta.
Thank you. Larry?
Um, just, uh, something that you've after, the two of us, on, on Dr. Purkett's campaign. And, uh, what you've after is, it's, it's virtual, it's an arm for a heart. It is an arm for a heart for a brand new perspective. I would actually, we need to have a video, I'm not saying it's a law, it's a, it's a, it's a, you start with a doctor, you either buy them over, buy a video. And the, uh, they make it just a cross that they're doing those pieces. So, if you're ever, you're interested in, we need access to the young nurses.
Is there able to increase access to nurse practitioners, or some nurses are doctors? Would they be charged prescriptions, available testing options that nurse practitioners would take care of? And will we be incentivizing that? Do I have to take her on that question? Wendy?
Uh, so, nurse practitioners and their Royal Albert is only recently become less prominent. Most nurse practitioners will train in areas of specialty. So they do their R I, and then they train specifically in kidneys and nephrology. Or they may go to oncology, cancer care. Some of them do go into family medicine and then they will join the practice. The way that they are paid, I think the government is much more complicated. Usually they are not paid fee for service, but instead paying a salary. Who pays that salary is another challenge. There are communities in Royal Albert that have come with salaries for a nurse practitioner. Recruited and hired ones is a very long process. If even physicians aren't certified, nurse practitioners are even shorter. This scope that you require a skill to practice in a rural community is much broader and convenient and in urban center. And it's putting a huge responsibility on nurse practitioner. I don't think there are many that are qualified for that scope at this time. Perhaps there will be specialty training programs in the future for rural nurse practitioners. But right now, it's a viable option for this community to fix the problem.
Thank you. Cheryl, please put your phone on, please, you're down. Are our foundations inclined to support this incentive financially? For example, does that have a hospital foundation? So we can explain what a hospital foundation is doing for option recruitment that will be appreciated.
So, previously we gave a incentive, obviously, that's a bonus for the law theater. And, uh, there's nine concert adults that are capable to cheer. We now increase that up to a hundred thousand.
Great, thank you. Just so we know, um, I also was on the standard hospital system, so that's how Sharon was talking about. He's an industry loan for a period of two years. So the doctors can use that for, uh, they send it at the practice, buying home, whatever it is that they need. And at the end of that two years, they rebate that money back to the foundation. And then we continue to recycle it wherever you have to, thank you, Cheryl. Um, how is the thirty-five thousand population determined and what is the bumper summer population? And how is the number of sixteen doctors determined for our region? The second one, I will refer to AHS because I'm not sure, that was the name of AHS, oh, that we need sixteen doctors in this area. The thirty-five thousand population comes from our border trade. That is our trade area and how many people we need to count our counties to our service. The bumper in summer population, when I was speaking with Janice Jean from hospital, she estimated that between. Um, it's only about the landslide, all the villages, all the different tourist structure, the ball tournaments, the summer gates, everything else. We can be anywhere between fifty to twenty thousand extra people in our communities surrounding Steller at any time during the summer. With that, how is the number sixteen come up with from healthcare services? Would anyone really like to explain that?
So, we don't necessarily just look at community and say, you have so many people, they're courting me, just money for the truth. We start at the baseline of where you are and we say, how many people do we need to do the job that you're doing? Stay out of the former position because they cannot, for capital, because you offer a different practice service. And so we say, well, I'm on my own, so take this as your family physician. We call at the time to get their next appointment. And we also speak at the hall, this is the emergency advert. And we see the unattached patients, and then we give that estimate.
Well, just so we know that one physician does not equal another physician by her. So it equals numbers or raw estimates based on all the averages. Um, you know, and that is what our constant, where I came up with the sixteen per server. But it's really difficult, it's like apples and oranges. So one physician might have multiple specialties in there, who delivers babies, who does, who's getting the work of march, another one might not. So I think the numbers, we just have to take it as an estimate, you know?
Yeah, this is what the state's saying, as I was saying, if you have, if you lost your, um, you sort of really real physicians, like my community too. We, we kind of encourage all the trades, right, we need everything, so, um, I would go to, even there, and, uh, my group, uh, for instance today, I would say, oh, I'm here as a junior surgeon, or a, or a, or a surgeon, or whatever. We would, we never have physicians coming to like that anymore, and that's just the truth. Um, the other thing is the sixteen that you, uh, that is a good, that's it, we use that quality to get there and out of it. It doesn't mean that we can have the sixteen as our opportunity. I just wanted to make sure that everyone understands that, that's just what we feel. Getting their needs to provide a basic care, um, either to somebody as well as to the surrounding community. So, uh, the, 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 I would say, that a baby worker was to want the, you know, views to get to the sixteen, but it doesn't mean we stop recruiting that sixteen.
I would need registered midwives who specialize in the low birth of seconds, who believes in this community. I'm being forced to relate to Red Deer as is the only community near Steller that I can get privileges to work in. I feel like now is the best time to integrate midwives into the community. How can you help me make this a reality? I have no idea. It's very hard. Okay, whoever pulls this.
Um, good evening, my name is Janice Stewart, and I'm the chief health officer, which I just don't quite, you know, tell you how. So, if we can ask the person that wrote the weekly question to email either myself or Laura, I don't get it, and I'm back to the answer. But my understanding of delivery is that we have to join an existing practice, and there's not a practice currently set up in Steller. We were quite close to the provisional delivery program, we did have the delivery privileges in, uh, walking out of the house and Red Deer. And our story launches to the stand of those programs to our hospitals. One of our biggest challenges is with, um, practicing with elderly or physician. Um, practice is to ensure that there is enough deliveries in the community to support both kinds of practices. So we can't return physicians who do a technical practice, they could do C-section and, uh, a neuro practice. If we have to, then they have to, um, practice for the physician. So it's a fine balance to try and make sure we have the right skills to provide support to the community.
Thank you, Ms. Janice. Uh, it is now eight o'clock, I tried to answer as many questions as I possibly could. Um, is there an opportunity to continue for another fifteen minutes? Or, uh, the other option that we have is we can email these questions to our app that has been here tonight. And post answers on the website, I think we can, so do you want to roll in for the fifteen minutes? I'm going to try to take that as a yes, and then it will be good. Um, are there incentives for all these term doctors to work in our shifts?
Yes, there are. Not every doctor can just say, hey, I'd like to come and work in Steller. You have to have privileges to work in Steller, which means you have to prove to us that you have the necessary skills to do our routine medicine, which you may or may not have. Depending on your background, your skills. Instead, we recruit what we call private ones. So they each have a pool of doctors that they know, the current physician, and they say, hey, would you like to come and work in the facility? And then we do paper mileage for private locals to come up and support us during times of crisis. Certainly, a community that is being saying, hey, we'd like to offer grass, which does support, we'll support those local physician, those options for you. Uh, we also try to make it available for local programs and communities that we can to support our locals. The locals are in short supply. We have probably three of them that have the service in Steller, and that's the one we're getting right now.
So, this is one of the things that, that we, um, local services, um, who, who's changed, we, uh, in AHS, we have a group called EC. Which is, uh, physicians that come to local, um, and want to share, give them the thumbs up, and they call you. Um, we come to everybody, uh, and provide the privileges without going through a big process. So if you have a difficulty in this, we, and if you get a local, and a local is like, no, like, privileged here, it's Arizona. I give them a, um, the courage to go and work to this.
Hey, that answers one of our questions that we have up here, who decides hospital or loses, that man right there. All right, um. Who can make this come together into one facility to lower overhead costs? As I said earlier, our physicians that operate in this community are independent business people. We are not here to interfere, interfere in their processes of managing their businesses. So. So that's kind of where we're at on this, uh.
Um, when we look at exploring, uh, getting involved with clinics, I like to point out that at B, for sixteen doctors. The digital clinic is still not the whole that happens, so. I, I don't know about the portier yet, but it's an answer, it's not like anything will link from where we should be at. We should be mobile, just kind of getting some additional doctors, first and foremost.
What is being asked to increase the number of medical students and doctors graduating Alberta, and how do we appeal to these grads?
Hi, other agents. Um, so most are probably aware that we don't do that as a school, rural campuses in Southern Alberta and Northern Alberta. For, uh, new medical schools that are graduated from AHS. Even if they all started up this wise, we have still a six-year order from having, uh, federal decisions coming out of those programs coming to Royal Albert. So here's an idea that actually has been so much younger with literature. Um, we need to talk to our many of the schools, uh, how you prefer, uh, placement of benefits to average into the program. And that is for rural Canada, the things that are important, the things of the rural student. We may not have access to the local secondary colleges that are, we don't have children, rural scale in Calgary. Who is supported in their, uh, medical school application process, we can go through the second, uh, rural incident in the week. And then of course, we give them parental treatment for the access to a residency. It should be okay to the people or for people. Because I have identification, particularly if you're not, you're gonna have to consider it, uh, this is for me for more.
And that's one. CPSA, why should you have qualified practices in Alberta if you're not a rural, if you're in the mirror? Why are we recommending rural centers and faculty instead of offering the number of decks?
So I haven't reached this question before, uh, we started. It is possible to be of all occasions unless you're referring to family medicine training after graduating that qualification. As I said, the second period of CPSA is a maximum of two, three months slots, maybe just for us one, three months off. Uh, with wait times, it's wait for, you can't decide when you want to, where to start. Um, we are looking, the policies largely have super criteria for registration. I can tell you a tale or a stat one. Uh, I don't repeat every intention towards physicians that go through our PRA since two thousand seventeen. Between ninety-three and ninety-five percent of them has stayed in the rural communities, so they were sponsored. Stat one has an efficient rate for sixty-six and seventy-five percent of contributors, they leave. So it says I don't care what the qualifications are, and they can keep them and they can attract them.
Thank you, one more. I have to go to the corner, huh? Those doctors are cheesy, we're very generous, what can we do to them, right, so, I guess they're paid people.
The best, the area of physician recruitment is standing in the literature, there's a lot of work I have to be done. There is certainly a concern that physicians are not being paid to do their part, or maybe they should, or being paid too much to be easy work. Just the highest that happens, or, or we just should, or family law, or family officers as well. It's not just mainly, it's the supported practice, it's what you bring to the position as a community to support family, which offers the most, the school where the kids, the sense of community. Support the practice, the other personnel, it's always stated, the different way of getting people. All those things are probably more current, it's simply a matter of paying, you might consider the ones in rural practice. Uh, again, to serve your eyes, probably twenty percent of the patients are rural practitioners. And maybe through twenty-five or thirty percent or, because the major practice, it was already a month, like, for service.
What are other communities attempting to successfully recruit and receive doctors, Sean?
Um, so I've had a lot of conversations with the community last few months, about what they're doing to, uh, improve. And most of my experience, people watch, I was in the VASIS programs, which were, were already.
It's easy, I'm not even talking.
We should just start every now and then. Straight. So I've talked to you about the future, it's pretty much all facility, that's what I'm calling the VASIS programs, which is, which is, when a doctor becomes a community. Uh, they usually come out of that, uh, uh, et cetera. Uh, maybe with another rare, uh, principle of my school, principle of the, and elementary, kind of, uh, with the degree. And you can, and that's just pretty difficult, most of them, they were, so actually, my financial standards. Most of them are, just to be, like, the, the, even about financial standard, we can read, and remember these actions, we can read. Sorry. Um, and what they had done is they were actually purchased a house, and that house, they were, and, uh. And, and, and on the mini, they had purchased, purchased a fourplex as well. And they were giving that, where I went, seven, the dollars. And there are communities that do, seven, people, we're letting these as well, most of them, clinics. They own clinics, or the clinics is a hospital. And those are pretty much what they review around, uh, central Alberta. And I reached out with our, uh, uh, Ken, or Wayne, Wayne writers using the financial standard, but nothing, nothing very well.
Are we going to recruit doctors from other countries and are there conditional requirements? Absolutely, we'll recruit as anywhere that we want to, and I think that, um, Mike told us a little bit about the four countries that we can recruit from, so I'm going to give that one. Um, retention of our doctors is important, but it's our focus on incentives for doctors working hard to cover the gaps.
Uh, that's what our law protection, like, we're ready to, right now, we're trying to, we'll see, about, who keeps us in the world, you know? And, uh, part of, um, part of the position, this is, has that happened, we've got, have everyone's positions, whether, uh, the potential to use. And we need to set up a law, we need to believe that, uh, and if we're moving through another, uh, government, the, the college system. When it comes to the, uh, assessment of those these, we can start, we can try to, we can, we can, we can, we can, we can, this is where we're, because that's starting out with, uh, thought community, we need to start with.
I would like to thank our guests here this evening. Um, it has been a pleasure to hear from all the different aspects of CPSA, of our health services, of our N P, Dan, and, uh. I know that our M L A, you know us, and speaking with our founder, the president. Thank you very much for coming out tonight. Uh, we do have, uh, a little ID to come up, but there's a couple closing comments.
Well, thank you so much for coming, and thank you for, yes, to answer a lot of the questions that we, uh, wonder about, and, and all of this, and we're trying to hold this as a community operator. Thank you for your commitment to my assignments. And before you leave, I have a bunch of sign, there's a, we're going to give you money. And, uh, I like sign, who are on your line? And shoulders forward to this committee. Shoulders forward to any doctor that would be a burden to the community and be helpful. And we truly appreciate all the support you have, at least a sum of eight hundred subs? Eight hundred subs. And that's about all, that's it in this community. We'll just let that happen, we'll see what we can do, so, 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 but, thank you, sort of, for our time, great. But, uh, we truly appreciate your being here.
If you have any questions, we'll pass them to the answer, we will try to obtain the answers, and post those on our website. Thank you so much.